And walk. City officials look to make LA more walkable city by prioritizing pedestrian safety. Rasha Goel has more.
Coming soon, there we go. A safer Hollywood Boulevard.
For longtime residents like Cindy Duhaime-Lonberg, these coming soon street improvements are long overdue and much needed. She's been involved in advocating pedestrian safety for the past 15 years and is happy to see changes finally being made.
Because the traffic and the density has increased so high lately. We've also had a lot of fatalities where people are getting hurt due to poor traffic controls.
The Hollywood Western Streetscape Improvement Project initiated by Councilmember Micho Farrell is geared towards encouraging walking and pedestrian safety. Changes will happen along a portion of Hollywood Boulevard from Gower Street to Western Avenue.
The goals were to make the sidewalks more walkable, to make the area more enticing for pedestrians, to improve the general environment, plant shade trees, design areas that would really encourage pedestrians to have a quality experience.
Some of the new features include ADA accessible ramps, curb extensions, and high-visibility crosswalks.
Another aspect of safety that we're bringing to this project is putting in pedestrian lighting. So we're putting in 10 new pedestrian lights as well as 82 streetlights, which will all be LED, so they'll be energy efficient.
Again, these improvements are being made here on Hollywood Boulevard between Gower Street and Western Avenue. They anticipate this project to be completed by the end of 2018. Hopes are similar improvements can then be made between Hollywood Boulevard and Santa Monica Boulevard. Reporting in Hollywood, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
LA may have collections, archives, and exhibits on its film industry, but something's been missing until now: a place to showcase every aspect of Hollywood filmmaking. Anna Marcos takes us on a tour of the future Academy Museum of Motion Pictures.
The grand vision of a museum to house all that Hollywood star-studded creativity called "the movies" has been years in the making. The public is getting its first sneak peek as the Academy Museum of Motion Pictures takes shape. Another reason to celebrate: a new $50 million donation.
This, I hope, will become the kind of epicenter for the film world and film lovers from all over.
The blueprint is grand indeed. Six floors of the old May Company Building will be converted to showcase thousands of pieces from film technology, costume design, production, and more. The museum will also draw from the Academy's collection of 12 million photographs, 200,000 films, and 50,000 posters. How about some Dorothy Wizard of Oz shoes?
Hollywood is both a place and an idea. It's a physical neighborhood and an industry, but it's also some piece of magic that touches people everywhere in the world.
There's a Spielberg gallery in family area, education space, theaters, exhibition galleries, a tea room, an entire floor dedicated to a living history of Hollywood filmmaking. Oh, and a floor dedicated to the Oscar experience.
We have the Oscars Experience, which allows visitors to walk the red carpet as if they're actually at the Academy Awards, and then to have the experience of going up on stage, holding a real Oscar, giving their acceptance speech, and having their photo taken.
Next door, a round sphere designed by architect Renzo Piano with an aerial viewing tower, rooftop terrace, and a mega theater.
What I love about it is Renzo has managed to create a new icon for the city. So I feel like the building will float. It's an amazing public gathering space.
The museum will share the block with LACMA, the LA County Museum of Arts, and the La Brea Tar Pits, which will soon turn this into a cultural mecca and arts destination. There's still 89 million to raise to reach a $388 million goal, but this Hollywood masterpiece already seems like a done deal. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The museum is set to open in 2019. And as the Academy Museum begins to take shape, major tax incentives are helping bring production back to LA. But it isn't just about production crews losing work. In fact, it's hit other areas in the entertainment industry as well. Rasha Goel has more on how LA film and TV musicians are trying to keep the score in California.
Ever think about how crucial music is to film and television? Well, so are those jobs. And with the issue of runaway scoring, these musicians and local supporters are out at LA City Hall with a Keeping the Score in California concert. The event is to help raise awareness on a new bill, AB 1300.
It's a music scoring tax credit bill, and the goal is to try and bring jobs back to California, jobs that we've lost to other places.
Those places include Britain, Australia, and New York. The new bill calls for a 30% credit to offset scoring expenses for movies shot outside of North America. Those movies which employ 35 or more musicians and complete at least 75% of the scoring in California.
We have an opportunity to not only employ those musicians who are here today, but for every musician that is here today, there are 1,000 in the pool of brilliant, brilliant talent that are waiting to work.
And certainly those 800,000 workers, those 300 unions are going to be standing shoulder to shoulder with each and every one of you until we get what you came for. And that's a good, solid, middle-class job that you can support your families on.
According to local musicians, movies provide a more stable source of income than television.
We want them to have good jobs, make a good living, and be able to just contribute as they do so richly to all the -- everything that happens in LA makes it such a great place to live.
AB 1300 is expected to be up for vote next year. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
It's a two-day festival that keeps people on their toes, and it keeps growing. Anna Marcos brings us more on the annual Latin Jazz and Music Festival put on by Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Department of Cultural Affairs.
A little jazzy salsa, just the ticket to get everyone up and on the dance floor. Well, almost everyone. Jazz and salsa lovers got down at the Fourth Annual Latin Jazz Music Festival in Council District 1.
They had some great rock and roll stuff with Latin feel, and that was pretty enjoyable. And all the women got out and they danced because the guys were a little backward about going on the floor, but it was a ball.
The party hosted by Councilmember Gil Sadio's office and the city. And there were some big headliners here, artists like Los Coyotes and Joe Button.
We're very excited. We have several Grammy winners. Bring this music to the people, preserve a unique American art form, and free to the public.
For free, you can't beat it. I pay to see these people.
Maybe I'll discover some new artists today, too, and I'll go see them again.
Since the beginning, the festival has been a huge success.
From the first year, we had under 1,000 people show up, which in the last couple of years has doubled. So today, we're looking at about 3,000 people.
And it's the music that seems to keep bringing the people back. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A total of 10 bands played over the two-day festival. An artist's vision is brought back to life as she shares LA's history through her artwork. But it hasn't been the easiest journey getting her work displayed in the City of Angels. Rasha Goel has more.
After 27 years, this landmark mural makes its way back to Union Station. "LA History: A Mexican Perspective," created by artist Barbara Carrasco, is on display at Union Station, one of the few places in the city large enough to accommodate the 80-foot mural.
She helped to depict here behind us what Los Angeles and what it meant for her to see through that lens of suffering, oppression, and glory.
This is historical mural. Every single thing in this mural is historically accurate.
The mural, created in 1981, contains 51 scenes depicting a chronological history of LA, emphasizing the experiences of marginalized groups. It captures the city's original native inhabitants through the 20th century, including her younger sister's image.
I'm really proud of my sister for doing this. It was a big struggle. She's very talented, and I just helped her a little bit. I posed for it.
This mural was last displayed here in 1990 and was censored for depicting the city's troubling history. The artist says it's been in storage, and she's been trying to bring it back into the public view since then.
For example, they said the Japanese don't want to be reminded of such a negative part of their history, a dark chapter. And I said, "Well, none of you are Japanese. Let's go ask them."
The mural, which was created for the Los Angeles bicentennial at the time, was then not shown and given a temporary display at the 1990 Los Angeles Festival. Officials feel it's especially relevant now, just as it was back then.
As we're going through all this strife in our country today, I think a lot of us here know that there's a lot of hurt, but there's also a lot of healing, and there's a lot of history.
From the incarceration of Japanese-Americans during World War II to the Zoot suit riots, all is shown through the unfolding of the woman's strands of hair.
This mural has survived attempts to erase the histories of people of color in Los Angeles, and it is still here today as a testament to those stories and the fact that they matter.
Can't even talk right now, so I'm just excited. I'm very happy with all my friends and family being here.
Carrasco says it took her eight months to complete the mural, but it's been quite the journey getting it to where it is now. But for now, she is overjoyed to finally be able to share this perspective with the world. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The mural will be on display at Union Station until October 22nd, and then at La Plaza until February 28th of 2018. Hopes are to find a permanent home for it. Mayor Eric Garcetti brings together community service providers to address our homeless crisis. A pilot program helps support local manufacturers, and the City of LA wants your input to help improve your neighborhood. All these stories in City B. To help guide neighborhood-based efforts to end homelessness, Mayor Eric Garcetti convened more than 300 neighborhood council members, homelessness liaisons, business leaders, and city commissioners to connect them with service providers on the front line of the crisis. As part of the Engage LA event hosted at Getty House, representatives of organizations including Lavame, Chrisless, Downtown Women's Center, and others answered questions on how to support local efforts to guide Angelenos who are homeless to services and housing, transform empty lots into safe parking sites, and build temporary modular shelters.
Make the pledge with me that every day we will do something to make sure that we create more of those good news stories of people coming home, of coming back, of finding each other, of looking out for one another, until we no longer have a single Angelino who is unhoused in Los Angeles.
Mayor Eric Garcetti also launched LA Original, a pilot program of the Mayor's Fund of Los Angeles in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Economic Development to spotlight and support LA's creative economy and local manufacturers. LA Original includes a logo, promotional campaign, and line of products from local makers. The program's proceeds will support creative entrepreneurs across the city. LA Original has engaged over 20 companies and retailers that are making new creations for the LA Original line or merging existing products with the brand. The City of Los Angeles is asking for your help. By taking a five-minute online survey, you can help the city decide where to spend millions of dollars to improve your neighborhood and community. These funds can be used to combat the most pressing issues in your community, like homelessness, the lack of decent parks, or affordable housing. Responses can be submitted until November 22nd. To take the survey, go to research.net/r/los angelecityconplan2017. More fun than a barrel of monkeys are a pair of newborn primates, the first baby mandrills to be born at the LA Zoo in decades. Gil Reyes has more from the zoo. Gil.
Yana Kane, everybody at home, it's a very special day at your Los Angeles Zoo with the arrival of the first mandrills in over 40 years. Here are the proud mamas Clementine and Juliette with their newborns. Mandrills, by the way, are the largest of the monkey species. They're also among the most colorful.
Yes, we are very happy and excited to announce that we have two new mandrill babies. We have a little boy and a little girl, and this is a relatively new family.
L'Oreal Dunn from the LA Zoo says the new moms arrived from France just last year. They mated with the zoo's only male mandrill Jabari to produce the babies.
You will see the males have blue and red on their face. They're just super colorful, and that is to attract the ladies and say that I'm this beautiful, strong guy. I'm going to make, you know, good babies. They're going to be strong, and they're going to be healthy.
Mandrills come to us from the rainforests of Western Africa. Because they have tails, they're monkeys, not apes, and are the largest of monkeys at that, weighing around 80 pounds as adults.
Another really cool thing, you'll see them grab stuff and shove it all in their mouth, but they're not actually eating at all. They have what's called cheek pouches. So right on these sides, they can stuff all kinds of food in there. Then they'll go somewhere, hang out, sit, and then slowly start eating everything.
Mandrills are now endangered because of poaching and habitat loss. Eventually, zoo officials hope to breed more.
That's our goal, you know, to save this beautiful planet of the amazing species. So come see these beautiful babies, because they're amazing.
From your Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
To donate to the zoo's conservation causes and for more on zoo hours, exhibits, and special events, just visit lazoo.org. Let's show your community spirit by taking part in a peace march, move to the beat of some Latin music during a family fun weekend event, and enjoy the fast-paced action of Red Bull Global Rallycross. All this and this week's things to do. Join community residents, activists, and Office of Councilmember Gil Sadio in a March for Peace in Lincoln Heights. The march will be followed by a resource fair and free food. It starts on Saturday, October 14th at 9:00 AM at the Boys and Girls Club located at 2635 Pasadena Avenue. Bring the family and celebrate the exhibit Cuba Is with a Family Fun Weekend. Join the fun for a weekend of Cuban dance, group art activities, storytime hosted by books and cookies, face painting by rainbow painted smiles, and interactive Latin musical and dance performances. It all takes place Saturday, October 14th from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at Annenberg Space for Photography's Skylight Studios located at 10050 Constellation Boulevard. For some heart-pumping racing action, head out to the Red Bull Global Rallycross at the Port of LA. Join other racing fans for all-day racing action, exhibitor booths, awesome giveaways, and the stars and cars of Red Bull Global Rallycross. The event takes place at Port of Los Angeles at 3011 Minor Street. For details, visit redbullglobalrallycross.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986.
I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986.
You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we can begin today by having our presentations. So I'd like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez. If you'd start us off for today, the floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues. Well, I am joined today by the pride and joy of the Northeast San Fernando Valley, our Foothill Division cadets. If you guys want to all come out. And I want to thank Chief Beck for also joining me, as well as our command staff over at our Foothill Division, as well as our Valley Bureau Chief Sherman. But today, we are celebrating the fact that we are number-one citywide among our cadet division program in the city of Los Angeles.
Well, let's give you a round of applause. And before you continue, Mr. Spindler, put that down. Mr. Spindler, it's your last warning. I don't want to have you blocking anybody's view. Back to you, Ms. Rodriguez. It's a warning. If I have to talk to you again, I'll have you removed. Ms. Rodriguez, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The LAPD Cadet Program was established back in 2010, and the purpose of the program is to help instill discipline and leadership training to prepare young people for those that are interested in a career in law enforcement or any profession. Discipline and leadership transcend all career paths, and so this program is really instrumental in providing those very key characteristics for a lot of the youth throughout the city of Los Angeles, but has really been a dynamic force in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. At my Pacoima City Hall office, our cadets meet every Wednesday evening from 5:30 to 8:00. They are an absolutely dedicated group, many of them incredibly involved in our civic activities that are housed at Pacoima City Hall. I'm actually, every opportunity that I get while I'm there, holding office hours or just in my office, it's really refreshing to see such positive activity happening there. But it doesn't happen in absence of leadership. And we have an incredible group of leaders from our Los Angeles Police Department that are helping to really become the mentors and the examples for these young people in the North Valley. And the youth service officers who are helping to lead our cadet program are none other than our Officer Claudia De La Cruz and John Madrid, who have been running cadet post 516 for the last three years, and I'd like to give them a round of applause.
Where are they? Give them a round of applause.
[applause].
From your Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
To donate to the zoo's conservation causes and for more on zoo hours, exhibits, and special events, just visit lazoo.org. Let's show your community spirit by taking part in a peace march, move to the beat of some Latin music during a family fun weekend event, and enjoy the fast-paced action of Red Bull Global Rallycross. All this and this week's things to do.
Join community residents, activists, and Office of Councilmember Gil Sadio in a March for Peace in Lincoln Heights. The march will be followed by a resource fair and free food. It starts on Saturday, October 14th at 9:00 AM at the Boys and Girls Club located at 2635 Pasadena Avenue. Bring the family and celebrate the exhibit Cuba Is with a family fun weekend. Join the fun for a weekend of Cuban dance, group art activities, storytime hosted by books and cookies, face painting by rainbow painted smiles, and interactive Latin musical and dance performances. It all takes place Saturday, October 14th from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at Annenberg Space for Photography's Skylight Studios located at 10050 Constellation Boulevard. For some heart-pumping racing action, head out to the Red Bull Global Rallycross at the Port of LA. Join other racing fans for all-day racing action, exhibitor booths, awesome giveaways, and the stars and cars of Red Bull Global Rallycross. The event takes place at Port of Los Angeles at 3011 Minor Street. For details, visit redbullglobalrallycross.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986.
You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986.
You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986.
And I want to thank Chief Beck for also joining me, as well as our command staff over at our Foothill Division, as well as our Valley Bureau Chief Sherman. But today, we are celebrating the fact that we are number one citywide among our cadet division program in the city of Los Angeles.
Well, let's give you a round of applause. And before you continue, Mr. Spindler, put that down. Mr. Spindler, it's your last warning. I don't want to have you blocking anybody's view. Back to you, Ms. Rodriguez. It's a warning, if I have to talk to you again, I'll have you removed. Ms. Rodriguez, sorry about that, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The LAPD Cadet Program was established back in 2010, and the purpose of the program is to help instill discipline and leadership training to prepare young people for those that are interested in a career in law enforcement or any profession. Discipline and leadership transcend all career paths. And so, this program is really instrumental in providing those very key characteristics for a lot of the youth throughout the city of Los Angeles, but has really been a dynamic force in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. At my Pacoimas City Hall office, our cadets meet every Wednesday evening from 5:30 to 8:00. They are an absolutely dedicated group, many of them incredibly involved in our civic activities that are housed at Pacoimas City Hall. I'm actually, every opportunity that I get while I'm there, holding office hours or just in my office, it's really refreshing to see such positive activity happening there. But it doesn't happen in absence of leadership. And we have an incredible group of leaders from our Los Angeles Police Department that are helping to really become the mentors and the examples for these young people in the North Valley. And the youth service officers who are helping to lead our cadet program are none other than our Officer Claudia De La Cruz and John Madrid, who have been running Cadet Post 516 for the last three years, and I'd like to give them a round of applause.
Where are they? Give them a round of applause. Welcome.
We have a total of 96 cadets currently enrolled at this post. And while a few of the cadets have aged out of the program, they've gone on to become LAPD officers, LAPD Reserve Officers, Park Rangers, School Police, and members of the U.S. Military. I couldn't be more proud to have these young men and women standing with me, because I know they are the best reflection of what we have emanating from the Northeast San Fernando Valley, but more importantly, some of the leadership that we have here in the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like to invite Chief Beck to come up for a few words.
Welcome Chief. Let's give the Chief a round of applause. Welcome Chief.
Well, thank you very much, and I would first of all, like to thank the councilwoman for recognizing this post. You know, it is no small achievement to be named the number one post in the city of Los Angeles. We have 24 cadet posts, over 2,200 young men and women in the program, and all of them vie for this honor every year. And so, to be recognized as the number one cadet post is a huge accomplishment. And I think that it's important for the council and the public to know that this competition is won on community service. You know, the cadets are all about learning how to serve, and that is their motto, and that is what they do, and that is what made this post number one. So I want to thank the Foothill Command Staff, I know Captain Eskridge is here, as well as Chief Sherman, and their cadet advisors who make this program run. And then, most of all, our great councilwoman for recognizing the program. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Ms. Rodriguez, before you present the resolutions, I'd like to recognize another member, if I might, Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. This is probably, of all the presentations we do, one of the most important. And I want to thank the department, I want to thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, but I want to thank the cadets. We know we've had some news this year on cadets, a couple people. Overall, we have tens of thousands of our youth, many coming from so many different backgrounds of at-risk youth, folks who are looking to fit in or find a direction. The hours that you guys put in for each other, for the community, is unparalleled. And we go to events all the time, and they're out there in the sweltering heat and the pouring rain, helping with traffic control, greeting people, and they look sharp as a tack, no matter what, all the time. And these are our most precious commodity we have in society, is our children, is our youth, our future leaders. And what you're doing, not only for each other, or individually, but also the ones you don't even realize, the impressions you're making on your peers and your colleagues, perhaps on a younger brother or a younger sister, by being a role model. I want to thank you very much, and I had to stand and applaud your efforts, because what you're doing is truly magnificent in making us a city of angels, you're all angels. Thank you so much.
Well said, Ms. Englander. Back to you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you so much, colleagues and Mr. President. So with that, I'd like to present our LAPD Foothill Division Cadet Post 516 with a recognition of their incredible efforts that have earned them the highest ranking position here among all the cadet posts in the city of Los Angeles. Thanks for being number one and showing what the Northeast Valley does best. Congratulations.
Thank you, young folk, for your service. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, could you call the roll, please?
Blumenfeld, Barnum, Buscain, Sadio, Englander, Herr Stossen, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sadio moves, Mr. Corretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves, Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed, Items 1A, E, and G, as the liens have been paid in full, and Item 1F, as the lien has been rescinded.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 10 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then let's go on.
Items 11 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, I don't see any specials, let's prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 25 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's continue and move forward.
Items 30 through 33 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Okay, we will, unless Mr. City Attorney, are there some of the items that we can deal with, or do you want to wait for the Budget Chair?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do 31, wait, what do we have here? 30, 31, and 32, we'll hold 33. So Madam Clerk, if you'd read those items.
Yes, on Item 30, in the case entitled Douglas Wade versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $750,000 in settlement of the matter. On Item 31, in the case entitled Monica Ramirez versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1.9 million in settlement of the matter. And finally, on Item 32, in the matter regarding the retention of outside counsel for a discreet environmental law matter involving city-owned property, there is a recommendation to retain Downey Brand LLP for a contract amount of $450,000 with a $950,000 contingency.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on those three items. I don't see anyone on the queue, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Buscaino.
On Item 31, show me as a no vote, please. It does not impact the outcome.
No, it does not. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, for our next presentation, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we're here to celebrate a very special 40-year anniversary. I'd like to direct your attention to the screens, and please cue the video.
X, everybody, X.
Once again, X. Billy, DJ, Xine, John.
A legendary L.A. punk band.
She had to leave. To Los Angeles. She found it hard to say goodbye to her own best friend. She bought a block on Hollywood Boulevard by the day she lived. It felt sad, it felt sad, it felt sad. Get out.
Get out.
Get out.
Get out.
Get out. She gets confused, right over the deadline. Her answer is, "But the days change tonight, change in a instant." The days change tonight, change in a instant. The days change tonight, change in a instant.
Colleagues, I am joined this morning by Xine Cervenka, John Doe, Billy Zoom, DJ Bonebreak, and from the Grammy Museum, Scott Goldman. How about another big round of applause for this groundbreaking historic band? Although each member of X hails from a different part of the country, the band itself has roots right here in Los Angeles. The band began in 1977, when bassist John Doe and guitarist Billy Zoom met through matching classified ads. The younger generation has no idea what that means. Placed on the same day in a local publication, Xine Cervenka first met Doe at a poetry workshop in Venice, and the two fell in love and became bandmates. DJ Bonebreak then joined the group, and they began playing at The Mask, a basement club on Hollywood Boulevard, symbolizing the seminal punk movement. The band's first four albums, Los Angeles, 1980, Wild Gift, 1981, Under the Big Black Sun, 1982, and More Fun in the New World, 1983, were produced by Ray Manzarek of The Doors. Los Angeles and Wild Gift were voted number one album of the year in 1980 and 1981, respectively, by the Los Angeles Times, and are ranked by Rolling Stone Magazine as being among the 500 greatest albums of all time. The first three albums explored aspects of dark love amidst the dark noirish backdrop of Los Angeles. I once stalked John Doe and Xine Cervenka at The Vons at Melrose and Vine, I think it was in 1983, when you all were shopping there, and I followed you on a couple of aisles, and I was afraid you were going to notice me that I was a stalking fan, so I abandoned it. But I'm sure anyone else has seen you in public over the years, has probably done the exact same thing. The Dodgers honored X on August 16th, when Xine Cervenka threw out the first pitch and John Doe sung the National Anthem. Additionally, to celebrate the 40th anniversary of Los Angeles punk rock band X, the Grammy Museum at L.A. Live presents a new exhibit, X: 40 Years of Punk in Los Angeles, on Friday, October 13th. That's going to be a lucky day. I'd like to bring forward, actually, Crystal Larson isn't going to speak today, we have Scott Goldman with the Grammy Museum to tell us a little bit more about this important exhibit.
Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Councilman.
Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to offer my thanks to Councilman O'Farrell, Mr. President, councilmembers. We could not be more pleased to honor this group of musicians behind us. They came out of Hollywood, as Councilman O'Farrell said, in 1977, and changed music forever in the process. At the museum, the exhibit that opens on Friday, we will tell their story, we'll give visitors a sense of what happened here in Los Angeles that changed punk music and changed attitudes towards punk music through interactive exhibits, as well as a number of unique artifacts from the band. So, we are here to thank the council, we join you in celebrating these terrific musicians. Thank you.
Give them a round of applause. You know what, Mr. O'Farrell, I do have a speaker on the queue.
There's a little more first, and then we'll do the speakers.
Okay, however you want to work it.
Sure, sure. So, as Mr. Goldman just mentioned, the importance of X, four decades after the inception of X, one thing is clear, X was not only one of the most influential bands to emerge from the punk movement of the late 70s and early 80s, but the band's music continues to be relevant today. Therefore, colleagues, we'd like to recognize the band X on the occasion of their 40th anniversary, and for their contribution to the entertainment music scene in Los Angeles, across the country, and around the world. So we're going to present the certificate, they're going to say a few words, and then
Mr. Herman, that's your first warning. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, honorable city councilmembers, for honoring us today, we truly are honored. If you weren't around, then I would like to say briefly that what the punk scene reminds me most of, if you think of a venerable L.A. institution, would be the silent movie days or the roaring 20s, when all the girls looked like Theda Bera and Clara Bowe with their bobbed hair and their red lips, and the guys were unpredictable Charlie Chaplin and Harold Lloyd figures, and the crowds were like, "You pay a nickel, sit in the dark, and you don't know if you're going to be terrified, or you're going to cry, or you're going to laugh." And those movies, like the silent movie days, it was gone in an instant, it was like a brief shining glorious moment, and today is our moment, and thank you so much.
On behalf of the band, we're humbled and honored that you would notice us and recognize us. We're all dreamers in this band, we just dreamed something up, and it became real, and that's something that can happen in Los Angeles and in the West. You can just introduce yourself as John Doe, and then after a while, someone says, "Oh, there's John Doe." Or you can say, "What do you call yourself?" And you say, "Well, we're called X." And they can say, "What?" And then you say the second time, "No, we're X." And then, in Los Angeles and in the West, you'll say, "Oh, there's X, they're over there." And we've been here for 40 years, and we've given something to L.A. to put L.A. on the map for punk rock, and now it's really rewarding to have L.A. give something back to us, and it's been a pleasure. Thanks for recognizing us.
Before I call on the first speaker, I just want to say, I really enjoyed the clip that you showed. The funny part is that it's 1977, and then they show the band rocking, and one of the members doesn't have his shirt on, and then they show 2017, he has his shirt on. I can relate to that. I can relate to that. But we're so happy that you're here, and we want to take a moment just to say thank you for all of the years and all of the people that you inspired. So today is your day, welcome to City Hall. And with that, Mr. Corretts, and don't take your shirt off.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know when X was founded, the most likely thing you thought would be happening is 40 years later, you'd be surrounded by a bunch of folks in suits and be here at City Hall, but here you are. And years ago, I was on the West Hollywood City Council and helped found the city in the 80s, and that was around when you were really getting rolling. I know you spent a lot of time at The Whisky in West Hollywood, and we're all very proud of that part of the history. Now, a few people suggested that we have a hold music roll of all the songs that relate to L.A. or mention L.A. in their title, so some uninformed people suggested we put the song "Los Angeles" on our hold music. But you'll understand why that was probably a bad idea. Although, a couple of our gadflies would probably like it, because their testimony is very similar usually, but that was a great song, despite its not being appropriate for the hold. So we appreciate all the great contributions you've made to the music scene in Los Angeles. So, we appreciate all the great contributions you've made to the music scene in Los Angeles and throughout the world in 40 years, and keep doing it. Thank you for all you've done for music.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sharon. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing one of the all-time great bands to City Hall today. It's such an honor to meet all of you and to be in your presence. I appreciate you all especially because you offered one of the greatest songs about the city of Los Angeles that tells our story at a very particular moment. And so, it's up there with Randy Newman, "I Love L.A." and Ice Cube, "It Was a Good Day", and "Welcome to the Jungle," and a host of other songs that, again, make Los Angeles the creative capital of the world that it is. You can come here, put your stake in the ground, live out your dreams, express yourself, and be accepted not only here but the world over. Thank you all so much.
Mr. O'Farrell, back to you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Gary Leonard, our city's photographer, and who really championed bringing X to City Hall for their 40th celebration. Gary, you are true blue, so thank you so much. And again, congratulations to X for all you've done for this city to sort of imprint part of our identity from back in the day. Your legacy will live on, so I wish you a hearty congratulations on this 40th anniversary. Thank you.
Okay, and as they are going to the back, I'd like to recognize the other Mitch, Mitch Englander.
Bob, right up here. Judy, you've got to come on, stand right up here as well. All right, thank you very much. This is an exciting day. You know, we've had the honor and the privilege today of recognizing angels throughout the city, but today is also a day of Kings. And in fact, we've got a very special guest before we start off with this presentation of Bob Miller, so if we can bring him on out here. All right, let's give it up for Bailey. There you go. All right. Colleagues, you know, they say hockey has a way of bringing out the best in us, sometimes the worst in us. In fact, you don't have to go far to look at our mayor when he gave a great speech about the three things a politician never does in public. But I'm not even going to go there. Today, I am honored, we are honored, to make it Bob Miller Day in the day of L.A., so let's give him a big round of applause. The voice of the Los Angeles Kings, ladies and gentlemen, our Hockey Hall of Famer. Bob has had 44 seasons of service. He first started with 17 years. It was a simulcast on TV and radio, and then they recognized that he truly had a voice and a face for radio. So, 27 years as the exclusive television voice for the team. Essentially, Bob Miller is the man that broke the ice of hockey here in Los Angeles. When the sports back then in 1973, we were a city of Dodgers and Lakers. But when the NHL, when they came to the Forum, Bob put hockey on the map. While superstar players, coaches, and famous lineups have come and gone, in a town that is always looking for the next fad, you, Bob, you have remained a constant. Generations of fans have fallen in love, have grown up with a storied history, a story of the Kings, and for 44 years, you've been their narrator. Since 1973, Bob called 3,353 games.
That's worth a round of applause.
Bob was behind the mic when the Kings won the Stanley Cup in 2012, and again, behind the mic in 2014. That, too, deserves a round of applause. He and his partner Jim Fox, former Kings right wing on Fox Sports West, are the NHL's longest-tenured broadcasting duo. In fact, Bob Miller is inseparable from the game of hockey as we know it. Can you imagine watching a game and not hearing from his voice, "He shoots, he scores," which I'm sure we're going to hear today? Bob has been saying that for 44 years. So, Bob Miller was born and raised in Chicago. He received his degree from the University of Iowa, and he had an early passion for sports broadcasting, and started announcing for the Hawkeye Football and Basketball Games when he was there. Before joining the Kings, he worked in radio and TV in Wisconsin, the voice of the University of Wisconsin Hockey, Football, and Basketball. Miller was later inducted into Wisconsin's Hockey Hall of Fame, and in 1998, to commemorate his 25-year milestone, Miller was honored by having the Staples Center press box named after him. Bob Miller was named one of the six inaugural members of the Kings Hall of Fame during the organization's 30-year anniversary. He was also presented with a lifetime contract. We should do that with some of our players. Miller was named California Sportscaster of the Year by the National Sportscaster and Sports Writers Association in 1997, and again in 2002. And in November of 2000, Bob received the Foster Hewitt Award, selected by the NHL Professional Broadcasters Association, and has a unique and special plaque in the Hockey Hall of Fame in Toronto. But wait, there's more. In 2002, Miller was inducted into the Southern California Sports Broadcasters Hall of Fame. He was named the top television play-by-play announcer in Southern California 10 times, received their special achievement award, and served as the organization's president for five years. In 2006, Bob Miller received a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. In 2011, he was inducted in the California Sports Hall of Fame, and if that weren't enough, he actually wrote, he authored, two books. Bob Miller's Tales From the Los Angeles Kings in 2006, and of course, our favorite, The Tales From the Los Angeles Kings Locker Room. That might be a pictorial. Not sure about that. But he did have some famous quotes in these books, and I've always been meaning to ask you what you meant by some of these quotes. "The night has a thousand eyes, and I'm a gypsy dancer still hungry for more." Those are words I think about when I go to sleep at night. Aside from the Kings, he did a lot more, including film and TV. L.A. is the film capital of the world, and after all, he also was on Cheers, Rollerball, Miracle on Ice, The Mighty Ducks, of course, and The Mighty Ducks 2. Not the Kings, but the Ducks, but we'll give him that one. A resident, most importantly, of his entire resume of what he's done for 44 years, he's not only a resident here in Los Angeles, but in the 12th council district. So, we'll make sure that his trees are trimmed and his streets are paved, and Judy wouldn't have it any other way. A resident of West Hills, Bob and his wife Judy have a beautiful daughter, Kristen, a phenomenal son, Kevin, and two grandsons, Kaden and Brennan. And despite his lifetime contract, he will be retiring, looking forward to not being on the clock, and is excited to relax, travel, and spend time with his family. After all of his time bringing the Kings and the thrill of hockey to the fans of Los Angeles, he definitely deserves a longer rest than five for fighting. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to, we have a number of special guests here that I'd like to call up before we hear from Bob. And the first is the president and the CEO of AEG, our true wonderful angel of the city, Dan Beck. Dan, come on.
Dan.
Thanks very much. It's great to be back here in council chambers. You know, we're very spoiled here in Los Angeles. There are so many fantastic teams that we have. But one of the things we pride ourselves on is we're one of only a few teams that were actually born here in Los Angeles with L.A., so with the Kings, we take a lot of pride in that. And we were here just a year ago, almost exactly a year ago today, to kick off the 50th anniversary of the L.A. Kings. That was the last time we're in council chambers. Bailey cast a couple of eye votes for a few measures, I remember that. But we're proud to be back here. The time before that was when we won the Stanley Cup two years earlier. We hope to be back here in council chambers with the cup again very soon. Those were momentous occasions, and I want to thank President Protam, Englander, President Wesson, and the entire council for celebrating another momentous occasion here today as we celebrate the voice of the Kings, Bob Miller. Growing up, so many of us in Los Angeles, everything we knew about the Kings was through Bob's voice, through his eyes, through his ears, through his stories, and we all owe him for that. And Bob really has accomplished everything there is to accomplish. He's getting this well-deserved rest, but he's done everything. He's a two-time Stanley Cup champion. He's a Hockey Hall of Famer. He has a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and he's really done everything. But I think the most important thing that he's accomplished is he's such a gracious man that he's won the adoration of Kings fans everywhere, and here and all over the world. And a lot of people don't know that about him, but when you see him on the concourse and when you talk to him, he truly is as great as he seems when you see him on television. So, the last thing before I hand the mic over, there's one thing that we did want to announce today, and that, that is, this year, we will be honoring Bob with a statue at Staples Center in Star Plaza.
All right. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well deserved.
He'll be placed alongside so many other L.A. sports icons like Wayne Gretzky and Luke Robitaille and Magic Johnson, Kareem Abdul-Jabbar, and of course, he will be right next to another legendary L.A. broadcasting icon, Chick Hearn. So, we look forward to that later this year. And speaking of icons, I want to pass the mic off to someone who is also in the Hockey Hall of Fame, someone who also has a statue at Star Plaza, our Kings president, Luke Robitaille.
Luke, welcome. Good to see you again.
Hey, good to see you. Good morning. So, we're here, obviously, to honor a very special person. For us, the L.A. Kings, I know today is Bob Miller Day, but we kind of feel like it's Bob Miller's year. We've been honoring him every week, it seems, since he's retired, and certainly is deserving. See, he was, like Dan said, he was the voice and the face of the L.A. Kings for 44 years. And what that did to every hockey fan or sports fan in Los Angeles is he made special Rogie Vachon saves. Like, when Rogie Vachon was playing, he made that very special. He made us realize how special he was. Every goal Marcel Dionne ever scored for the L.A. Kings, he announced them in a way that you became a fan if you saw it. He was the one that announced the triple crown line and made it history in the hockey world. And, you know, he announced it when Gretzky made his first step in Los Angeles on the ice, and he was the one that made us realize how special that was to get Wayne Gretzky. And then, when Wayne was breaking records with the L.A. Kings, he made that very special. And obviously, like Dan and Mitch says, he announced both Stanley Cups that we won, and we have DVDs of it, and we know our L.A. Kings fans, this is one of their most cherished trophies that they have, is having the voice of Bob Miller announcing our Stanley Cup championship. But you see, what made Bob even more special is what Dan referred to is, for us, it's been a humbling past few months just to realize how much he touched the fans of Los Angeles. Bob's never said no to any of them, just like a lot of hockey players do, but he went above and beyond for them. Him and Judy, they were always there for us. When we had a charity event, they helped us raise millions of dollars. He's always been there for us, being the announcer and making sure those events were the premier events that we were trying to do. And then, to hear all the parents, sorry, Bob, some of the grandparents, too, talking about how the impact he's had in their lives, it's been incredible and very humbling, and it's something we're using with our staff and making sure that everybody lives with these kind of priorities, and the same with our players. Finally, for every player that played for the L.A. Kings, I've said this before, but I know I've never said it here, is Bob has made it a very special memory for every one of us that scored a goal. Because, see, our parents will listen to those tapes, or they were watching those games, and if you score goals, there's no sound. It's just a goal. But when Bob Miller announces your goal or your record, it makes it a memory forever. So, on behalf of all the players, we're always grateful, and we want to thank Bob because he made our hockey players' life very special, so we're grateful for that. And Bob, and Judy, congratulations on a special day on behalf of all of us, the L.A. Kings.
Hey, Mitch, I have a couple of speakers on the cue.
We still have a couple more. No, but wait, there's more. He gave us 44 years. So, with that, we have our radio play-by-play announcer as well, Nick Nixon here. Say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm here to set the record straight. Bob started in 1973, and it was not a bed of roses at that time. Bob struggled. He wanted to learn. He wanted to fit in, but it took time. He worked with Dan Avi as a sidekick. That only lasted a couple of years. Dan left. They tried Rich Marata. That didn't work with Bob. Bob was still trying to find his way into the NHL. Then they hired Pete Weber. He left after two years. And then, in 1981, Dr. Jerry Buss hired me to work with Bob Miller. And Dr. Buss said, "You know, Nick, Bob's been here for a few years, but he's having a tough go of it. Can you work with him?" And I said, "Sure, sure, Dr. Buss, anything." So, in 1981, Bob and I started our partnership, and after, I think it was the third or fourth game we did together, I think we were on the road in Calgary, Bob pulled me aside after one of the games, and he said, "Nick, I really appreciate you joining us on this broadcast. I'm learning so much from you. You obviously know more hockey than I do. You have a great broadcasting voice, and you connect so well with the fans. Can you teach me what you know?" And I said, "Sure, sure. Let's give it a shot." So, unlike his previous partners, I lasted for a while, six, seven, eight, nine years. And only after I joined Bob did the accolades for him start to roll in. Councilman Englander mentioned the Hall of Fame, charter member of the Kings Hall of Fame, the Hockey Hall of Fame, the Southern California Sports Hall of Fame, star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and on, and on, and on. So, on this wonderful day, Bob Miller Day here in Los Angeles, the only meaningful thing I can say is, "Bob, you're welcome."
Boy, Mitch, the two of them must have had a fun...
Ah, can you imagine? And that's before they had any time delays on radio, so we'll have to get some of those old tapes. And we also have our radio color commentator for the L.A. Kings, retired Kings player, Daryl Evans, here as well.
Welcome, sir. Welcome.
Real tough to follow an act like Nick Nixon there. I think Nick pretty much said it all with regards to Bob and how special he is to all of us. I mean, the respect that he has, you know, within our game, every rank that we go to. It's really been an honor to be able to kind of ride the same wave for him for, you know, such a long time. We've learned so much about the game and about the Los Angeles Kings. I know there's books that are printed on that, but when you get the live version of Bob Miller, being able to travel with him on every given day and the stories, you know, when it's 40 below in Edmonton in January or in Buffalo and you've lost by a bunch of goals, Bob finds a way to be able to warm things up. And never forget him telling stories. I think that's something that I'm always going to cherish over all the years, and as Luke mentioned, you know, listening to Bob Miller call your goals and things like that. These are special moments, but there's nobody that has any more class in our game. He's a Hall of Famer, but more importantly, he's a Hall of Famer in life, and Judy now has, you know, the great luxury to be able to spend more time with him. We'll see whether she's able to put up with him like we were able to put up with him. You know, he was a tough customer on the road sometime, picky where he wanted to go eat all the time. We had to go to Bob's restaurant. But I think, you know, they're going to spend a lot of great time together, spending time with their grandchildren, be able to visit, you know, and go see some of the sporting events. And, you know, I know when Bob announces... And, you know, I know when Bob announces retirement and that, it, it seems like we've seen him more in his retirement than we did before. So that's a good thing, and we look forward to sharing a lot of moments with Bob in the years to come. But thanks for everything that you did for the game of hockey, and I'm so proud that you were, and honored that you were able to call Stu Stanley Cup Championships with the Los Angeles Kings. So congratulations on a great career, Bob, and thanks for sharing everything with us.
We've got, his partner in crime is here as well, Jim Fox, to say a few words.
Welcome, Jim.
Thank you so much. Over the years, we've talked about Bob in so many different ways, and the way he was so professional, and the way he delivered the game, and the way he connected and communicated with the fans. And I'm not going to rehash those, the research, the homework, you have to be prepared. One thing I learned from Bob, I think we can all learn from, and it happened on a daily basis, and that was this: positive attitude. It's amazing what a positive attitude can do to set an atmosphere. I had fun every single day calling a Kings game, because when Bob came into the room, he created an atmosphere that was positive, fun-filled. You could look forward to your next day at work, you could look forward to the game. Not all games are fun to do when you're losing 10 to 1, but that positive attitude just permeated through everything that went through every single day, every meeting and every game. If Bob made a mistake, which were very few, it would last for 15 seconds, he would think about it, correct it, and move on. If I made a mistake, he would talk to me about it, 15 seconds, it was forgotten, you move on. Positive attitude. I just want to applaud Bob Miller for setting the tone, setting the atmosphere, and making, going to work every day so much fun. Thanks, Bob.
Before we turn it over to any of the speakers on the queue and over to Bob to hear from him, we have a special video that's queued up. If we can go, go ahead and roll that first video.
To all Kings fans, today marks my final home telecast here at Staples Center. I plan to do one more regular season game tomorrow at Anaheim. I want to thank all of you for making my 44 years with the Kings so enjoyable. I appreciate all the support and positive comments you have so kindly sent my way. I've always enjoyed visiting in person with so many of you. I will always remember the thrill of all of us cheering as the Kings set numerous records and won their first Stanley Cup in 45 years in 2012. It was a magical time, as I watched and listened to all of you scream and holler, cry and shout with joy, as you realized we were all involved in something we thought we might never see: the Kings hoisting the Stanley Cup. I remember removing my headset several times just to hear you roar following a Kings goal or a victory. I will always remember seeing hundreds of thousands of you lining the streets of downtown Los Angeles and cheering the Kings players as the open air buses rolled by with a Stanley Cup displayed. I'm sure all of you thought, at least we've seen them win one, and we're satisfied. Then, unbelievably, the Kings did it again, two years later in 2014. Two Stanley Cups in three seasons. Who would have believed that?
Oh my God.
I have seen the Kings fan base grow by leaps and bounds, starting with the great years of Rogie Vachon, Butch Goring, and the Triple Crown line, and then the acquisition of Wayne Gretzky in 1988, a trade that put the Kings in the forefront of the NHL.
Wayne Gretzky's NHL record book is now complete.
I have been fortunate to be able to do something I've always wanted to do: bring the thrills and excitement of Kings hockey to all you loyal fans. We have been through ups and downs together, but you always remain faithful. My family and I sincerely thank you for making these moments and years the best of our lives. Your loyalty and support of the Kings is outstanding, and I hope we can all see the Stanley Cup skated at center ice once again. Sincerely, Bob Miller.
Great, thank you. I just, I wanted to first add my voice to the chorus to say thank you. On behalf of all Kings fans, we really just have, have appreciated all that you've done to call the games. And then as a West Valley guy, I appreciate that, and I wanted to talk about your commute for a second, because I know you, I know how horrible the commute is from, from the West Valley to downtown, and you're going to need your hockey fix as we, as these years move on. And you probably know this, but I'm working with Luke and the team, we're trying to get a Kings branded hockey rink in the West Valley. We're going to make it happen, really excited about that. And that way, when you need your hockey fix, maybe league hockey, but you're going, you're not going to have to travel all the way downtown to Staples Center. You still do that, I know. But we're going to make it so that you don't have to go so far, so that you can enjoy hockey close to home. And that's something we're going to work on, and so thank you again for all your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Coretts.
Bob, I just want to thank you on, on behalf of all the Kings fans out there for giving us the most incredible and joyful broadcasting for 44 years. And I also want to say, I don't know if anybody's really thought about this, but LA sports fans are so lucky. We have had the best sports teams, but we have had the most incredible broadcasters, between Vin Scully and Chick Hearn and Bob Miller. How could, how could a city get so lucky? And not only greatness, but incredible longevity. So you're, you're the last of the greats to retire. We're sorry to hear it. I actually do have to take this opportunity to put in one complaint to the Kings, though.
Cut his mic.
Sorry, I gotta, I gotta stick this in. I was, I was the biggest Kings fan back when Rogie Vachon wasn't gold, because my father, who died many, many years ago, was still alive, and we went to lots of games that we shared. And so at the last Kings parade, I was stuck on a bus with no current players. And I was like, how could this happen? I got screwed. And I wound up sitting next to this guy with his grandson, and I realized I was sitting in the row over from Rogie Vachon. And I can't tell you how thrilled I was. That was the, the high point of my, my Kings fandom, for sure. So although it could be a complaint, it's certainly not. That was actually a great moment, and I thank the Kings for that. And I thank you for the great broadcasting that you did back then. I remember sometimes if my father went to bed early, he would go to bed with a transistor radio next to his ear, listening to you calling the Kings games. So one of my best memories, and you have just been incredible for the Kings and for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. I'm glad everything worked out for you.
Ladies and...
Mr. Coretts, Rogie Vachon actually filed a complaint as well with the Kings. He had to sit next to Paul Coretts, so we'll have to, we'll have to win it again to rearrange that for both of you. Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, Bob Miller.
Thank you very much, council members, and Councilman Mitch Englander and his staff for arranging this today and all the help that they've given me. This is indeed an honor for me, and someone mentioned how many accolades that I have been able to receive, and I appreciate all of them. This is certainly one of the highlights for me. It was always great to see all of you around the Kings and, and Council President Herb Wesson at our rally at Staples Center. It was great to, to have all of you behind the team, and this has just been an outstanding moment for me and an outstanding career for me. I do want to introduce, she's been mentioned before, my wife of 54 years, Judy. In this town, you're looking at a couple of dinosaurs, 54 years of marriage, and she has been the glue that kept everything together when I was on road trips with the Kings. She did a lot, and we are still happy. I don't know how thrilled she's going to be to have me around every day, but we'll find that out in the coming years. Thank you, Judy. And thanks to all of my colleagues here behind me who have helped me throughout the years on the broadcasts, and really, I truly mean that, helped me become a better broadcaster every day. They were always there, supportive, and I appreciate everything that the colleagues have done, everything that Anschutz Entertainment Group has done for me, and as long as, as well as the Kings management, and of course, Fox Sports West with the telecast. I am truly honored and to hear today that there's going to be a statue at Staples Center honoring me, that, that is beyond my wildest dreams. I don't think I ever thought that would ever happen. But what a highlight for me to be able to join, as someone mentioned, the great athletes of this city, and to be honored in that way. It, it really is special to me, and again, I thank Anschutz Entertainment Group and the Kings management for making this a possibility. And to be next to the late Chick Hearn, who 44 years ago recommended me for the Kings job, and I've never forgotten that he gave me that boost, and I appreciate it. So I've always, since I was a youngster in Chicago, had the desire to be in radio and TV, and had a 57-year career in that profession, the last 44 with the Kings. And it has afforded me a chance to visit great cities in the world, to see great cities in the United States and Canada, to be involved in great moments, in historic moments, in sports, and none more thrilling and exciting than, as has been mentioned, two Stanley Cup championships by the Kings in three years. So this has been an outstanding moment for me. Tomorrow is my birthday, you've thrown a great party for me here today, one of the best I've ever had, and I thank you all for all that you have done. It's been a great moment for me, and I treasure it. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Bob Miller.
So to present for Bob Miller Day in LA, come on up. This is signed by all the council members as well, and we want to say thank you, God bless you, and wish you the best.
Again, let's give him one more round of applause, and happy birthday tomorrow, Bob. Okay, I'm going to go to general public comment just for one minute. I'm going to call up, is it David? Come on up, David, as the diehard King fan, come on up. Before they leave, let's make sure David can speak as, as the Kings are leaving. I'm glad I, that was caught on the card. Anyway, David, you got your minute. Welcome.
First of all, I would like to remind my other fellow Kings fans to not use profanity as the mayor here. I spoke before this very council to share my Olympic experience for the LA 28 Committee. That journey started for me on February 22nd, 1980, the Miracle at Lake Placid. That was the first hockey game I'd ever seen, and for the next three and a half decades, yes, I do believe in miracles. But what I didn't include that day was my first live sporting event. I saw the Kings host the Philadelphia Flyers at the Fabulous Forum the next night. Fast forward to the 21st century, and most of my memories were linked with the voice of the Kings, Mr. Bob Miller. I was fortunate enough to be at the last game at Staples Center against the very Chicago Blackhawks that were the opponent for Mr. Miller's first broadcast 44 years ago yesterday, October 10th, 1973. I know I wasn't the only hockey fan that was crying that evening. Now, Alex Faust, are you here? Yeah, he's a great person and a great broadcaster who I've met and welcomed, and he's a great guy, but can I just say on behalf of all Kings fans, Mr. Miller, we still miss you.
Thank you, David. Okay, Mr. Wass, could you bring up Mr. Wass on my screen? John Wass. You have items 1A and 1B, 4, 26, 29, and general public comment. Mr. Wass, come forward.
Number four, street lighting, you're doing a good job on street lighting, and we could go into the 29. Council action at 15. Close session, you just awarded $1.9 million to Monica Ramirez. The cadets, look, see, you can rape an Hispanic woman if you're...
You're on, get on topic, Mr. Wass.
And I want to know, and I want the LA Times to tell me, what happened to Monica Ramirez two years ago?
You're off topic, Mr. Wass. Let's go...
Okay, I'm, okay, so you can just shove this one minute, 50 seconds.
No, go give him his one minute.
I'm going to public comment. I want to know what happened to Monica Ramirez? What did you do to her that you're paying her out $1.9 million? I know that the LA Times and City News Service suck the cock of Herb Wesson, and I'm telling you right now, Mr. Wesson, you're right about not keeping, wearing your shirt, because you must have gained about 40 or 50 pounds. You look really bad.
So this is not in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city? We should move on.
It's not under the jurisdiction? Where does he get all his free meals, cocksucker? Where does he get all his free meals? He gets it from the city. And I'm telling you right now, hollywoodhighlands.org, and we, Herb, Herb knows when to keep his, his mouth shut and his mouth open.
All right. Let's do Mr. Herman. Bring him up on my screen. Mr. Herman, you have items 25A and B, C, 26, 27, 28, 29, and general public comment.
Good morning, Angelenos. The trooper, in regards to CD9, Mr. Price, funding for services associated with the Jupero Sierra Branch Library. Well, you have a constituent here with a lien on item 1M, but besides that, to transfer $300,000 from the capital improvement expenditure program...
expenditure program. No. Because why? Because we shouldn't be wasting money on services that really do not adversely make things better. Well, what the fuck is he talking about? Well, you figured out, rookie attorney, you look like the Keebler Man. Then on item 29, CD13, dealing with bitch O'Farrell, and I'm not gonna talk about Christ, but relative to amending the prior council actions September 18, the Hollywood East Vermont medium projects. Now, they're not talking about little mediums. They're talking about mediums that cost the taxpayers lots of fucking money. The same money we talked about when we said boycott Bonin because of the road diets.
You're off topic. Let's give him, no, no, you've been warned too many times. Give him his one minute for his general public comment.
Don't be a fucking general public comment, motherfucker.
That's where it's your on.
That's fine. Fear of the dark, fear of the dark. Is there someone knocking on your motherfucking door? No, there's no one there. It's only Herman, the trooper in the dark night of the scheme of scams of abuse, waste, and fraud like the bastards of the city of Los Angeles, the SOBs like that Jew boy Blomfield who doesn't sit on his seat to push a button to answer to me or to any one of you. So fuck you, 42 USC, my California Constitution rights and my civil liberties because I'm here to protest. A white nigger in a black man's face, that's who I am with no disgrace. When I sat at that public safety meeting this morning, 8:30, talking about all the white niggers, I mentioned about the cadet program. Stop fucking 15-year-old kids and fuck your cadet program. Fuck all white niggers too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Let's get Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, you have all of the items on item 1 and 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 25, A, B, C, 26, 27, 28, 29. General public comment.
Yes, he can add. So turning to the liens, 1M, we have a Latino gentleman on Jefferson Avenue, 747 East Jefferson. It's in Mr. Price's district. We need to receive and file 1M. This gentleman deserves amnesty. He's one of the few Latino people on Jefferson near Woodbine where the rooster and Mr. Price live. So we want to, unfortunately, he's busy back there sucking the tea.
No, you stay on topic.
Latino homeowners that live in Glassell and Echo Park, El Sereno and Boyle Heights. We came together at my home and we shared personal and painful stories about being at the point of losing our homes when the lifeline of home sharing appeared in our lives. Right in the living room of my home, I saw that familiar look of fear in Latino faces as we contemplate the reality of yet another ordinance, yet another law, yet another group of politicians who impose something upon us, telling us that they are doing it for our own good. If you pass this ordinance in its present form, you would presume to impose yourselves into the very inner sanctum of our Latino homes, which is the last asset that many of us still have. And please note that I am also a board member of Blend and we financially support the cadet program that was honored today at our northeast L.A.
Thank you.
That is who you would be hurting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So before I go back to general public comment, Madam Clerk, let's vote on items two through 10. Two through 10. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Now let's move to items 25 through 29. On those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And Mr. President, for the record on item number 32, the contingency amount is $95,000.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to general public comment. I wanna get Roxanna Stroyska. Roxanna. Jury. Margaret Malloy. Just when you hear your name, come forward. Jose Rodriguez. Richard Felton. Yes, please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jury Rambo. I live in Council District Eight and I'm here to speak on the upcoming ordinance regarding short-term rentals and how it affects those who own a property that is under rent control. I own a modest duplex. I purchased it just to have extra space for my family when they're here from out of town. And when they're not, I wanted to have the option to meet other people and rent out my place, short term. And for it to be taken away from me completely, I think it's unfair. And with short-term rentals, I feel like we have a option to meet other people from other cities around the world and I think that brings us all together as people.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come identify yourself.
Margaret Malloy. So there was a KCT documentary last night on Airbnb. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Englander were interviewed and presented a mixed review of whether the current situation with short-term rentals are legal or not legal, but the city attorney clarified that they are illegal currently. I'm really surprised at the confusion, Mr. Harris Dawson. You were a community organizer before you came to this podium. Rentals in residential zones, in 2016, the mayor promoted, the city council and the city council endorsed revenue from a currently illegal short-term rental system. That's money laundering. I don't know how you would define it as any other source of revenue. If it's illegal, how can you classify it as a worthy source of revenue? So what should we as individual stakeholders think about our city government?
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please come identify yourself.
Yo soy Jose Rodriguez y me pegaron esto en la puerta de mi casa y vengo a saber qué es lo que te voy a hacer para arreglar el problema. Buenos dias, soy Jose Rodriguez.
Good morning, my name is Jose Rodriguez.
Quiero solucionar el papel que me dejaron pegado en mi casa.
I want to solve this problem about this paper that they posted on my house.
Quiero saber cómo puedo pagar o si me pueden ayudar para...
I want to know how can I pay it and if you guys can help me to pay it.
Para acabar el problema este, que todo quede completo.
To end this problem and to have everything complete.
So Mr. Price, why don't you have him chat? In fact, this is what we're gonna do if you would explain to him, we are going to continue this item for 30 days. So that means this item will return to this council on November 8th and he should have conversations with the gentleman in the front row to see if we can't work it out.
Can I leave right now, there's no problem?
For 30 days is continued. So explain to him that he has 30 days, but he should try to work that out before the 30 days are up.
Can I speak with him and I can leave?
Yes.
Right after I speak with him, am I going to be back within the 30 days?
I didn't hear, what did you say?
Right after I speak with him, am I going to be back after those 30 days?
Why don't he, why doesn't he have a conversation and see what kind of arrangements can be made? I can't guess what's gonna happen because they have not had the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good morning, President Westen, Councilman Harris Dawson. My name is Richard Felton and I am an Airbnb host. I've been hosting vacation rentals since October of 2016. I recently purchased a home in the morningside park area. I work full-time for the county, Los Angeles, doing security. I drive for Uber and Lyft part-time and I still have difficulty meeting my monthly expenses. Home sharing has definitely helped me meet my needs. Hosting guests through Airbnb has helped me enormously in paying my bills monthly. I hope the city of Los Angeles will not limit the amount of days per year that I will be allowed to host. I feel that I have just as much right for vacation rental guests as the hotel industry does and should not be limited to only 180 days per year. I feel that I should be allowed to host guests 365 days a year, just like any hotel is allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. Thank you, sir. Yvonne Michelle Autry, please come forward.
Yes, for this record, I'd like to state that it's an overwhelming consensus that the community does not want drones. I'd also like to speak in opposition to the construction under development or in discussion for development on Seventh and Maple. We do not want that. We do not want the drone, we need more affordable housing. We do not want the drones so that especially women, black women, are not suffering more targeting use of electronic weapons perpetrated by CIA undercover. The targeted individuals have complained about this, the majority of black women. And there's a larger majority of Hispanic men, maintenance men, that are targeting, following, sexually harassing us. Unfortunately, some black men, men of all races that have been told to harass us, but why we believe those that are funding this extermination of black women. We are not temptresses. These are vampires, cannibals, pedophiles in maintenance of the status quo in this hidden extermination of black women and also with the...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Autry. That concludes general public comment. Ms. Autry, your time has expired. Your time's expired. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Autry, please.
The speaker is now disrupting the meeting.
Let's go to item 1K. 1K. No, Ms. Autry, your time's expired. Your time's expired. Your time's expired.
And she's continuing to shout and disrupt our meeting.
Your time is expired.
And in case the mics aren't picking up, she's still shouting.
Your time is expired. Ms. Autry, your time has just expired. Nobody wants to bother you. Your time is up. Okay, so let's go to item, no, sergeants...
And now she's shouting from the audience.
Ms. Autry, this is the last time. Just sit down, please. Okay, I wanna call up item 1K. Now she has to be removed because she's disrupting the meeting and I'm trying to bring the speaker up on 1K.
And she's shouting, and now Mr. Herman is shouting from the audience too.
And Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman should be relieved, removed as well.
And he's shouting. Ms. Autry and Mr. Herman are both being escorted out as they shout.
Okay. Let me get John...
And he's shouting all the way up.
Aina Shima for item 1K.
Hang on one.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
And he's shouting as he leaves.
You make my day like you always do. All right. 1K, John Aina Shima, please come forward, John. And before we go to John on item 31, if we can change Mr. Englander's vote to no vote as well. John, please come to the mic. Yes, sir.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here to protest the tax lien on my property. This is a single-family residence and this has to do with code compliance, which I have complied with. The final inspection will be done next week, but the items, the mailings of these fees were never mailed to the proper address. And I'm a senior citizen, this is a single-family residence, and I'm asking them not to put the lien on my property. The fees are excessive for, I know they were intended for business purposes, but this is a single-family residence and so therefore I'm asking for the lien to be waived and the fees to be waived. That a person shouldn't lose their property because of these fees.
Okay, I was looking for the staff that oversee that district, John. I don't see them. But what I will do is I'll continue this item for one week. So that means this item will be continued until October 18th.
October 18th, okay.
October 18th.
And then I should meet with my councilman?
You should meet with, I'm trying to find him now, but you should meet with the representatives from Council District One. But this item has been continued for one week.
To the 18th?
Yes, sir.
So I should meet with them before then?
See if we can't work something out. All right?
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In fact, Mr., so Mr. Sadio will designate a staff member to chat with you. Mr. Sadio, I have continued this item for one week. You may wanna do it longer than that, but it's...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. We can vote on item number one at this point.
Excuse me, Mr. President, before we vote, there's also a request to continue 1D for 30 days to November 8th.
Without objection, so ordered. So let's vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Okay, to our people that are here in the audience, we're now gonna move into our closed session items. So sergeants, if you would please clear the council chambers, we're going to move into closed session. closed session.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well. We begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not going to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used. And to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail. And if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585-NI-KF, 5060-Watch 3. Fire and emergency.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to know good. Some of these kids still don't... They're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed by the parents. The guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us. They're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well. We begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not going to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used. And to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail. And if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Okay. So, Mr. City Attorney, do I defer to you or to the clerk? Madam Clerk?
On item 33 in the case entitled John Leopold Victoria versus Stuart Lawrence Levington, there is a recommendation to expend $15 million in settlement of the matter.
Okay.
And I will add that settlement's paid over three years, correct?
Thank you. Okay, what's before this body?
We need to take a vote on that matter.
Oh, we do? Okay, on that, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now what's... Mr. Spindler, disrupting the meeting. What's before the body now?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
The motions are posted. They are referred. Announcements, members? Announcements? I don't see any. If all, would please rise. For adjourning motions, if all in the council chambers would please rise. Mr. Buscagino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's council meeting in honor of Arvella Grisby, a beloved member of our Watts community. Ms. Grisby was born on February 22, 1925, just outside Dallas, Texas, married to her husband Leroy Grisby for 30 years, and together they dedicated their lives to serve their community. She was involved with the Watts Neighborhood Council, mentored many youth in Watts, and much more. She recognized... Was recently recognized by Supervisor Janice Hahn, Congressmember Maxine Waters, the NAACP for her work with youth and families of color in Los Angeles. She never met someone she didn't help or encourage. She made a big impact in the lives of many individuals in our Watts community, truly a local icon. In fact, a pocket park and a street in Watts have been dedicated in her honor over the course of her lifetime for her many achievements in the South Los Angeles area. She is preceded in death by her parents, Uncle Frank Hopkins, brother Rochelle Hopkins, children Evelyn Rose, Napoleon Smith, and Harold Smith. She leaves behind sons Paul and Charles, many nieces, nephews, and grandkids. She'll be truly missed by the entire Watts community. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more adjourning motions to my left? I don't see any. Now I'm looking on my right side, Mr. Coretza's side, Ms. Rodriguez's side. I don't see any. Okay, members, this meeting is adjourned.